Okay, welcome. Welcome everyone. The February tenth, twenty twenty-five meeting of the Monroe County Legislature will now come to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Barnhart. Ms. Barnhart is present. Ms. Bartholomew McCoy. Ms. Bartholomew McCoy is present. Mr. Baines. Mr. Baines is present. Mr. Blankley. Mr. Blankley is present. Ms. Bonick. Ms. Bonick is present. Mr. Brew.
Here.
Mr. Brew is present. Mr. Burgess. Mr. Burgess is present. Mr. Chardy. Mr. Chardy is present. Mr. Colby. Mr. Colby is present. Mr. Cruz. Mr. Cruz is present. Ms. Delvecchio Hoffman. Ms. Delvecchio Hoffman is present. Mrs. DeFlorio. Mrs. DeFlorio is present. Mr. Dondorfer. Is excused. Mr. Frazier. Mr. Frazier is present. Ms. Hasman. Ms. Hasman is present. Ms. Hugh Smith. Ms. Hugh Smith? Ms. Hugh Smith is present. Mr. Johns. Mr. Johns is present. Mr. Keller. Mr. Keller is present. Mr. Long. Mr. Long is present. Mr. Mafucci. Mr. Mafucci is present. Mr. McCabe. Mr. McCabe is present. Ms. McIntyre. Ms. McIntyre is present. Mr. Milne. Mr. Milne is present. Mr. Morris. Mr. Morris is present. President Roman.
Here.
President Roman is present. Mr. Sinclair. Mr. Sinclair is present. Ms. Smith. Ms. Smith is present. Ms. Vasquez Simmons. Ms. Vasquez Simmons is present. Mr. Udelson. Mr. Udelson is present.
Okay, thank you. We will now have a moment of silence, so please join me in a moment of silence. You all, please stand as legislator Chardy will now lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Legislator Chardy?
States of America and to rule public, which stands on nation under God into this world with the routine.
Now move to approval of journal. Your copy of day one, January fourteenth, is available through Novus Agenda. Without exception, this journal will stand approved as submitted. Legislators, the referrals submitted to the legislature for the next committee cycle are on Novus Agenda as well as online. Do you have one announcement? As we all know, February is Black History Month, and it is a time to reflect on the remarkable contributions, resilience, and achievements of Black Americans throughout history. Established by President Gerald F. Ford forty-nine years ago to expand upon the original week-long celebration established fifty years prior, Black History Month honors the too-often-neglected and forgotten accomplishments of Black Americans in every area throughout American history. As we honor this legacy, it is crucial that we continue to engage in constructive dialogue, foster understanding, and all while promoting unity. Let us join and remain steadfast in our commitment to acknowledging the lessons of the past, confronting present challenges, and working towards a more inclusive and equitable future for all. As we watch attempts to erase history today, we must continue our efforts to support uplift and progress within our diversity today and every day. Thank you very much. Thank you. As was mentioned, legislators, the referrals submitted to the legislature for the next committee cycle are available on Novus Agenda as well as online. There are several proclamations scheduled this evening. Mr. Clerk?
Would Moses Robinson please come forward? Also, county executive Adam J. Bello, legislators Michael Udelson, Ricky Frazier, and President Yuvresha Roman.
The Monroe County Legislature recognizes Moses Robinson. Whereas it is the sense of this legislature to honor and celebrate the people and organizations that make Monroe County a better place to live. And whereas, attendant to such concern, the legislature is justly proud to honor Moses Robinson and his contributions to our community. And whereas, Moses Robinson began his career in law enforcement in nineteen eighty-five as a Rochester police officer. Moses has served his community as a school resource officer, a crime prevention officer, and as a community liaison officer, spending his career working with residents to foster relationships between the police and the community. And whereas, Moses is also a member of the Rochester Police Department's Crisis Intervention Team, which aims to help improve relationships with people in a mental health crisis to ensure safety for the community and the officers. And whereas, as a crime prevention officer, Moses helped develop intervention and prevention strategies geared towards empowering youth and making positive life decisions to help improve the safety of our communities. And whereas, through his dedication, Moses demonstrates exceptional leadership in fostering collaboration and understanding with local organizations, schools, and residents to help create a safer and more supportive environment for all those living in Monroe County. And whereas, Moses's commitment to safety and integrity extends well beyond his professional responsibilities, serving as a role model for our youth and an advocate for compassion, understanding, and respect. And whereas, the entirety of Moses's career has been spent building trust and integrity between the Rochester community and law enforcement through community engagement. The example set by Moses Robinson stands as a testament to the power of positive community engagement. His contributions will continue to inspire both his colleagues and the residents of the community he serves. Now, therefore, let it be known that we, Yuvresha Roman, President, Adam J. Bello, County Executive, Michael Udelson, Majority Leader, Ricky Frazier, Legislator District Twenty-eight, and the Democratic Caucus of the Monroe County Legislature do hereby recognize Moses Robinson on this eleventh day of February, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, very quickly, I will say this and then exit. But I want to truly give honor to the Creator for His gift. It is His gift and me that manifests His glory, His power. I want to say thank you to all of you here for the honor of me being here, for the honor of serving the city of Rochester and working with the partners in the County of Monroe. You know, Mr. Bello, our chief, Smith, and all of those who played a part in the path to make this happen. I want to thank each and every one of the members here for this honor. I want to thank my family who are the ones that understand and continue to drive me forward. It is for my family and for all families, no matter what part of the city or county you live. You know, Martin Luther King said these words, "We will rise together as a family, or we shall perish as fools." And I think that with all the institutions that we have in the city of Rochester, all the caring people, those who are driven by faith and driven by purpose, this is a city. This is a county that sparked liberation. The idea of freedom, justice, and equality will always be embedded in the city of Rochester and in County of Monroe, working together in unison to serve and protect. This is not about just a uniform. It's about uniforming and partnership for all of us to work together for the future of our children. I want to thank all of you, especially my friend, Mr. Ricky Frazier, and all of those who are standing behind me. To God be the glory and to bless this nation who gives us the opportunity to just breathe free. Thank you.
Would members of the Millard E. Latimer and Son Funeral Directors please come forward? Also legislators Ricky Frazier, Lister Bartholomew McCoy, Mercedes Vasquez Simmons, Rose Bonick, William Burgess, and President Yuvresha Roman.
The Monroe County Legislature recognizes Millard E. Latimer and Son Funeral Directors. Whereas, it is the sense of this legislature to honor and celebrate the people and organizations that make Monroe County a better place to live. And whereas, attendant to such concern, the legislature is justly proud to honor Millard E. Latimer and Son Funeral Directors. And whereas, the Latimer Funeral Home was established in nineteen twenty-two and is Rochester's longest-established African-American business. And whereas, Millard E. Latimer graduated from the Syracuse School of Embalming. His wife Lydia M. Latimer later joined him in business in nineteen thirty-four where the business was located on Clarissa Street. In the sixties, the Latimer Funeral Home moved to South Plymouth Avenue where it has remained ever since. And whereas, the funeral home has been owned and operated by the Latimer family for over one hundred years. They have decades of unmatched experience in providing families with unique support. And whereas, in nineteen sixty-three, the Latimer Funeral Home was incorporated and renamed the Millard E. Latimer and Son Funeral Directors. Upon incorporation, Millard E. Latimer Jr. became president. And whereas, across the county, Millard E. Latimer and and son are known for always ensuring that the same compassionate, personal, and professional attention is offered to everyone who walks through their doors. They have served thousands of Rochester families and offer grief support to those in need. And whereas, with legacy spanning generations, Millard E. Latimer and Son Funeral Directors stands as a testament to resilience and dignity and will remain a pillar of our community for years to come. Now, therefore, let it be known that we, Yuvresha Roman, President, Ricky Frazier, Legislator District Twenty-eight, Lister Bartholomew McCoy, Legislator District Eighteen, Mercedes Vasquez Simmons, Legislator District Twenty-two, Rose Bonick, Legislator District Twenty-seven, William Burgess, Legislator District Twenty-nine, and Carolyn Delvecchio Hoffman, Legislator District Twenty-five, do hereby honor the Millard E. Latimer and Son Funeral Home on this eleventh day of February, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you so very much. I'm not big on talking in front of people. But I just want to let you know that I'm working on the third generation of my daughter, Melina. So that's about it. Thanks again.
I just want to say thank you like my mom said, and it's just a very special honor. Thank you.
Would James Payne please come forward? Also legislators Tracy DeFlorio, Robert Colby, Dave Wong, and President Yuvresha Roman.
Whereas, career and technical education provides students with a school-to-careers connection and is the backbone of a strong and educated workforce that fosters productivity in business and industry and contributes to leadership in the national and global economies. And whereas, by twenty thirty, the talent shortage and skills gap in the United States alone is expected to total a loss of eight-point-five trillion dollars. And whereas, career and technical education and Skills USA give high school students empowering experiences in the meaningful application of skills such as reading, writing, and mathematics, as well as the development of Skills USA Framework skills, including personal skills, workplace skills, and technical skills grounded in academics, thus improving the quality of their education, providing increased motivation to learn, and giving all students leadership opportunities in their career fields, schools, and communities. And whereas, eighty-seven percent of employers report trouble finding skilled candidates, yet career and technical education offers students opportunities to learn skills and have career experiences that may lead to further education or meaningful employment to address the skills gap. And whereas, the cooperative efforts of career and technical educators working with business and industry stimulate the vitality of our nation's economy by preparing graduates for careers forecasts to experience the largest growth within the next decade. And whereas, Skills USA is a national organization for students preparing more than four-hundred-thirteen-thousand students annually enrolled in technical skilled and service occupations in middle schools, high schools, and colleges slash post-secondary programs to be high-performance workers. Now, therefore, we, Yuvresha Roman, President, Tracy DeFlorio, Legislator District Three, David Wong, Legislator District Sixteen, and Robert J. Colby, Legislator District Twenty, on behalf of the Monroe County Legislature, do hereby proclaim the week of February second to February eighth, twenty twenty-five, to be Skills USA Week in Monroe County.
Good evening. My name is Savannah Weiner, and I'm part of the Medical Laboratory Assistant Anphrobotomy Program.
Good evening. I'm Erin Newton, and I'm part of the Danger Vision Communication Program.
We want to thank the esteemed members of the Monroe County Legislature and honored guests for inviting us here tonight. We stand before you today to proclaim the importance of Skills USA Week and the profound impact this organization has on our community and nation. Skills USA is more than just an organization. It's America's proud champion of the skilled trades and the number of workforce development organizations for students. As we approach Skills USA's sixty-fifth anniversary in twenty thirty, we reflect on its remarkable journey and countless lives it has transformed. At its core, Skills USA's mission is to empower students to become skilled professionals, career-ready learners, and responsible community members. This mission is accomplished through a unique approach called the Skills USA Framework, which is the blueprint for career readiness and the foundation of all their activities. The Skills USA Framework focuses on three crucial areas. Personal skills, including integrity, worth ethic, professionalism, responsibility, adaptability, and self-motivation. Workplace skills encompassing communication, decision-making, teamwork, multicultural sensitivity and awareness, and planning and leadership. And lastly, technical skills covering computer and technology literacy, job-specific skills, safety and health, service orientation, and professional development. This comprehensive approach ensures that Skills USA students develop not just technical proficiency, but also the soft skills that are increasingly vital in today's workforce.
Skills USA reach is truly impressive. It serves over four-hundred-thousand career and technical education students and teachers in middle schools, high schools, and college or post-secondary institutions nationwide. Through leadership training, career readiness programs, and a hundred-and-thirty skills-based competitions, Skills USA is actively closing the skills gap that threatens American industry. As we face growing challenges of incoming inequality and a widening skills gap, Skills USA stands ready to meet these challenges head-on. Their Drive to Success Five campaign, leading up to its sixty-fifth anniversary, outlines five key tenets to address our nation's workforce challenges. By supporting Skills USA, we're not just investing in an organization, we're investing in the future of our community, our economy, and our nation. We're ensuring that the future is in good hands because it's in skilled hands. As we proclaim Skills USA Week here in Monroe County, let's recognize the invaluable contribution to this organization makes to our youth and our workforce. Let's commit to supporting their mission, helping to build a stronger, more skilled America. Thank you and good night.
Would Cory Peels, Paige Ditzel, Matthew Gabello, and Jacob Babcock please come forward? Also legislators Michael Udelson, William Burgess, Albert Blankley, Carolyn Delvecchio Hoffman, and President Yuvresha Roman.
The Monroe County Legislature recognizes the Special Olympics New York. Whereas, it is the sense of this legislature to honor and celebrate the people and organizations that make Monroe County a better place to live. And whereas, attendant to such concern, these legislators are justly proud to honor the Genesee Region Special Olympics athletes for their participation in the twenty-twenty-five Winter Games in Monroe County and the twenty-twenty-five World Games. And whereas, the Special Olympics were founded in nineteen sixty-eight by Eunice Kennedy Shriver and inaugurated in New York one year later. In nineteen seventy, Rochester hosted the first state Summer Games. Today, Special Olympics New York is the largest program in the United States. And whereas, Special Olympics provides sports training and athletic competition in a variety of Olympic-style sports for children and adults with intellectual disabilities and provides opportunities to develop physical fitness, demonstrate courage, and experience joy. And whereas, this program develops skills beyond athletics by connecting mentors with aspiring athletes to encourage healthy lifestyle habits and leadership. And whereas, the Special Olympics will be a testament to the spirit of teamwork, determination, and community, as well as the importance of fostering an environment of respect, equality, and acceptance for all individuals. And whereas, the athletes of the Genesee Region, Cory Peels, Paige Ditzel, Matthew Gabello, and Jacob Babcock will go on to proudly represent Monroe County on Team USA in the twenty-twenty-five World Games. Now, therefore, let it be known that we, Yuvresha Roman, President, and the Democratic Majority Caucus do hereby honor the twenty-twenty-five Special Olympics Winter Games and encourage all residents to support and celebrate the athletes, volunteers, and organizers on this eleventh day of February, twenty twenty-five.
My name is Kelly, and I'm with Special Olympics New York here in the greater Rochester area, and I just want to thank county executive Adam Bello and President Roman and the Monroe County Legislature for this very, we're very appreciative of this recognition. We're so excited that state winter games is back in Monroe County for the next three years. Um, we like to bloom when we're planted, so get ready. Over one thousand athletes, coaches, and their families will be here February twenty-first and twenty-second. So we need volunteers. So if you're interested in volunteering, please go to our website, specialolympicsny.org. But we appreciate the county's support on this endeavor. We're ready, we're excited. And more importantly, these four amazing athletes have worked and trained so hard for the past year and a half. And they leave March fifth, and they're going to represent the United States of America in Torino, Italy, and just and they deserve that. And I just, I just want to say, just so you know, because you won't see me on a pair of ice skates, I'll tell you that. Matt and Cory are in figure skating. Cory's from Brighton. I want to talk about the county. Cory's from Brighton. Matt's from Arondacoit. Paige is Alpine skiing, and she's from Fairport. Jacob is with law enforcement, and he's carrying the flame of hope into opening ceremonies. And he's from Brockport. So give them a round of applause, and we're going to give you a round of applause. Thank you.
You'll now be asked to legislature to hold public hearings. I now declare open the public hearing entitled Increase and Improvement to Facilities in Northwest Quadrant Pure Waters District entitled NWQPWD General Pump Station Interceptor and Treatment Plant Improvement Project.
We have one speaker registered for this public hearing. Our first speaker is Kevin Lockhart. I think he left. There are no other speakers registered for this public hearing.
You, I now declare open the public hearing entitled Increase Improvements of Facilities in Northwest Quadrant Pure Waters District entitled NWQPWD NWQPRRF Electrical Improvements Project.
No one is registered for this public hearing this evening.
Thank you. There being none, I declare this public hearing closed. I now declare open the public hearing entitled Increase Improvements of Facilities in Northwest Quadrant Pure Waters District entitled NWQPWD WRRF SPDES Permit Upgrades Project.
No one is registered for this public hearing.
There being none, I now declare this public hearing closed. I now declare open the public hearing entitled Increase Improvements of Facilities in the Gates-Chile-Augden-Sour District entitled GCOSD General Collection System Improvement Project.
No one is registered for this public hearing.
There being none, I declare this public hearing closed. I now declare open the public hearing entitled Increase and Improve the Facilities in Gates-Chile-Augden-Sour District entitled GCOSD GCO Pump Station Improvement Project.
No one is registered for this public hearing.
You, there being none, I declare this public hearing closed. I now declare open the public hearing entitled Increase and Improvements of Facilities in Rochester Pure Waters District entitled RWWD General Collection System and Treatment Plant Improvements Project.
No one is registered for this public hearing.
There being none, I now declare this public hearing closed. I now declare open the public hearing entitled Increase and Improvements of Facilities in Rochester Pure Waters District entitled RPWD FEV SPDES Permit Upgrades Project.
No one is registered for this public hearing.
There being none, I declare this public hearing closed. Well now, I now declare open the public hearing entitled Increase Improvements of Facilities in Rochester Pure Waters District entitled RPWD CSO, CSO, Travel System Improvements Project.
No one is registered for this public hearing.
Thank you very much. There being none, I now declare this public hearing closed. I now declare open the public hearing entitled Increase and Improvement of Facilities in the Rochester Pure Waters District entitled Replacement Heavy Equipment.
No one is registered for this public hearing.
Hey, there being none, I will now declare this public hearing closed. I now declare open the public hearing entitled Increase and Improvement of Facilities in Arondacoit Bay South Central Pure Waters District IBS CPWD General Pump Station and Interceptor Improvement Project.
No one is registered for this public hearing.
Okay, thank you very much. There being none, I declare this public hearing closed. I now declare open the public hearing entitled Increase and Improvement of Facilities in the Arondacoit Bay South Central Pure Waters District entitled IBS CPWD South Central Trunk Sewer Improvements Project.
No one is registered for this public hearing.
Hey, there being none, I declare this public hearing closed. I now declare open the public hearing entitled Authorizing Lease Amendment by Negotiation with Rochester Community Baseball, Inc. for Management of Innovative Field Parking.
No one is registered for this public hearing.
There being none, I declare this public meeting closed. We will now reconvene the legislature, the February eleventh, twenty twenty-five meeting of the We will now reconvene, the legislature, the February 11th, 2025, meeting of the legislature is reconvened. At this time, there are no formal committee reports scheduled for this evening. We will now hold the public forum. Thank you to everyone who has signed up for the public forum. We ask that everyone maintain the quorum during this time. We will not tolerate any disruptions during this meeting from the gallery. A warning will be issued before a deputy will be asked to remove you from the gallery. We have several people registered to address the legislature, Mr. Clerk.
If you require assistance, a deputy is available to assist you in approaching the lecturn. I will call three people forward at one time. Each speaker will have two minutes in which to address the legislature. Please do not bring up any signs or props, do not single out any legislator, and please conclude when the buzzer sounds. Thank you for your cooperation. The first three speakers are Paul Farsella, Jenny Lundberg, and Terrence Schnur.
Last month, the alleged good attributes of the Rochester Museum and Science Center were mentioned. Although they have good science exhibits such as mineral and early life exhibits, those who attend these exhibits at that museum likely do not have basic rights, especially the freedom of speech on museum grounds at the Rochester Museum. Here is why. Around mid-July 2003, I had a meeting at the Rochester Museum and Science Center with the manager and the man of security. The security man said this, and I quote, "Everything said on museum grounds is subject to scrutiny." After about 22 years, I still remember this word for word. I brought this to the attention of the Albany Museum Chartering Office. After reporting to this chartering office a long time, that office was afraid to fix the problem for fear of the Rochester Museum would be losing money. I therefore strongly encourage everyone present to tell your friends this and stop attending the Rochester Museum and Science Center. What I have said is a truth and no joke.
Good evening. Agriculture, what does it mean to you? Farming, does it speak to you? When you sit down to dinner with your family, do you thank your farmers for the food before you? We know the inconvenience of tractors on the road, and how you drive around us, and how you speak about us. But do you know what the world would look like without us? You walk in Wegmans or Tops or Aldi's, and you think that food will be there always. Remember your farmer, for they are the key to the food on your table and a full pantry. Can you name a local farmer and tell me what they grow? If you're unsure, we can help you to know. Monroe County Farm Bureau would like to thank you for having us this evening and to invite each and every one of you to join us in a farm tour in your district. So we've sent you an email, so you should have our contact information, and we can set something up for you so that you can meet the farms that you represent. So thanks, and I hope you all have a good evening.
Good evening. Two and a half weeks ago, the county executive, who is acquainted with the reasons for confidentiality and personnel matters, demanded transparency regarding a preliminary investigation commissioned by a body with no clear authority to follow up on allegations against a prominent local elected official. A few days later, media published a leaked confidential report, which concluded, based on the one person's assessment of the credibility of the principal witnesses, that the most, that there is at least slightly more than a coin-flip's chance that the allegations, the most disturbing allegations are true. Within one day, the county executive demanded the officials' immediate resignation. Last April, Webster Police released a video documenting 26 minutes of abuse of power by a prominent local elected official. In nine and a half months, the county executive has said, "What exactly?" What I find weird is the county executive's starkly disparate treatment of these two matters. Thank you, and have a good night.
Our next three speakers are Robert McFarland, Judith Bello, and Elizabeth Myers.
Let me know when you start the clock, if you wouldn't mind. Don't? Alrighty, I wasn't even planning on mentioning the Water District, all those public hearings that no one showed up to testify about, but off the cuff, I'm struck by that, that no one was here to even speak about those, address those issues, when in Gaza, there are no water, public water systems. They've all been destroyed by Israeli bombing. There are no wells, there's, there's no sewage. It's, in fact, it's running through what's left of the streets of Gaza. So that was not a prepared remark. I don't consider this a prop. This is one of many books about what's happening in Gaza and Palestine. This is by Ilan Pape, who's been called Israel's bravest, most principled, most incisive historian. He was born in Israel, he's Jewish. It's called The Biggest Prison on Earth: The History of the Occupied Territories, and is published in 2017 to the Palestinian children killed, wounded, and traumatized by living in the biggest prison on earth. That was in 2017. So, till about a year and a half ago, and I read this into the public record a year, at least a year ago. This is from Giora Ilan, a former general and member of the Israeli security, how much time do I have left? 28 seconds. "Israel needs to create a humanitarian crisis in Gaza, compelling tens of thousands or even hundreds of thousands to seek refuge in Egypt or the Gulf." Sound familiar? The entire population, these are quotes from Giora Ilan, "The entire population of Gaza will either move to Egypt or move to the Gulf." Israel has no choice. That's, I was here to demand that the county of Monroe remove the flag of Israel, which has been committing crimes against humanity. It's well documented, I could spend another three hours documenting that, but the International Court Criminal Court has done that, they have all the evidence. Thank you. And it's, it's against the law, by the way.
Good evening. I too am here to talk about the fact that the flag of Israel stands in front of our county building alongside the United States flag. I'm going to briefly just mention three points. One is the moral issue that Robert just raised, which I am wholeheartedly in agreement with, but which is not really your problem. Then there's the political issue, like, does this represent, this is why I said I came to speak, does this represent the people of Monroe County? I don't think so. I don't think that the flag of foreign country, which is currently an international pariah, it represents the people of Monroe County. And I furthermore, I do understand that there's a small section of the population here that fervently supports Israel. But that doesn't change the fact that in a democracy, the majority is the strongest suit. And I would believe that the majority of people in Monroe County do not feel the Israeli flag represents them. And then I have a third point to make, which is the legal issue. There is a law, I was just looking around with a friend, and she's going, there's got to be a statute somewhere, and we found it. There's a New York State statute, which I didn't bring up with me because I thought that Robert was going to distribute them, which says that it, there's a state law saying that you cannot post a foreign flag with the United States flag on a government building in New York State unless the leadership of that foreign country happens to be visiting that day. So I think that would pretty much say that it's not legal for the Israeli or the Ukrainian flag to fly over the Monroe County, in front of the Monroe County office buildings. And I thank you very much for your time.
Good evening. Thank you for your service, you legislators. I know this is a lot of time, and that you devote this to the good of our county and our country. I'm here on behalf of taxpayers and on behalf of people who don't like killing and on behalf of people who don't like genocide and on behalf of people who try to follow the law. Israel bombs, USA pays. How many kids were killed today? Israel bombs, USA pays. How many kids were killed today? Polls show that most Americans want a ceasefire in Gaza. I'm one of them. I want Israel to stop bombing, snipering, occupying, and stealing Gaza. I do what I can. I stand in the cold for an hour every week at a rally near the East Avenue Wegmans. You may have seen us there. I call elected officials. I speak out in my church. I attend meetings online and in person. I send emails. My husband and I have sent substantial amounts of money for relief and for publications and for human rights organizations. I do that. I'm here to ask you to follow the law, the law that Judy just referred to, that says, "It shall not be lawful to display the flag or emblem of any foreign country upon any state, county, or municipal building." We need to take the flag of Israel down from our county building. I have copies of this law to distribute. How do I do that?
Our next three speakers are Alan Blair, Dr. David Spurber, and Hemanchu Hoja.
Hi. I'm here from Citizens Climate Lobby to tell you why we need more food waste composting capacity in Monroe County. The state Food Donation and Food Scraps Recycling Law requires any business or institution generating more than two tons of food scraps per week to recycle them if there is an organics recycler within 25 miles. The 16 qualifying entities in the county together generate over 2,000 tons of food scraps per year. Keeping it out of our landfills would save big money and tons of carbon pollution. But much of that food waste is not getting recycled. Why? Because the only Monroe County facility that can accommodate this law can't handle all the generated food waste. We need more of them. Recycling centers in all county quadrants and in the city will accommodate all legally required food scrap recycling and kickstart a county-wide recycling program as well. That means hundreds of tons less carbon pollution. It means God knows how many fewer trips to the landfills with that much less truck pollution. Thanks to the baby steps the county has already taken, we now have everything we need to get this project off the ground. The pilot program Pittsburgh and the city has been conducting have worked out logistics for collecting and transporting household food scraps. What we've learned can be incorporated into a county program that doesn't need a 70-mile-round trip to some Livingston County anaerobic digester. We now have a county climate coordinator and funds to pay for a sustainability engineer, but we need to put it all together. We're beyond feasibility studies now. Let's create food scraps recycling jobs here in Monroe County. Let's create compost we can use to fertilize plants in our parks and prevent runoff erosion. Let's offer help with composting so households can go green more easily. The benefits will be big.
Hello. My name is David Spurber. I'm a medical doctor, I'm Jewish, and I've been to Gaza as part of a humanitarian medical delegation. And I've seen and experienced personally Israel's massive violations of international law that have been going on for decades. I'm here to talk about democracy in Monroe County as relates to the issue of the Israeli flag that's hanging from this building. The, it has bothered me for the last year at least that that flag is out there. I've written countless emails, I've come to this building. I've attempted to get meetings with the county executive, but all to no avail. So I'm here. Israel has been committing massive atrocities in Gaza. They have slaughtered at least 70,000 innocent civilians. Twice that number is, have been injured. That's about 200,000 people, and half of those are children. So we're talking about 100,000 killed and injured children in Gaza. In addition, they've destroyed 90% of all housing. They've destroyed every hospital, every university in Gaza, and much more. They have selectively gone after doctors. They've killed hundreds of doctors, and including shooting some, a doctor that I personally know, twice. So because of these atrocities, the International Court of Justice, the highest court in the world, and the International Court Criminal Court have responded by charging Israel with commission of genocide and by issuing an indictment for crimes against humanity against Benjamin Netanyahu. So I think democracy requires, the government express the will of the people and respect for all levels of law. So the massive majority of Americans, including Monroe County, are opposed to what Israel is doing and are in favor of an arms embargo. So for the reasons of showing respect for international law, this flag needs to be removed. Otherwise, democracy is not being done justice.
Hello, I'm Hemanchu. I'm a resident of Monroe County. I'm a neuroscience PhD student at U of R. And I'm speaking on behalf of Citizens Climate Lobby about the composting program. My family has been part of the Rochester City Compost Pilot Program for, since its inception, and we have reaped its benefit, benefits. and we have reaped its benefits tremendously. So I want to thank the Monroe Community Legislature for that, and especially for your recent approval of the matching grants for schools, which want to start a landfill-free program, and the $1 million grant that, part of which has been awarded to hire a sustainability engineer. I think all of those policies are in line with our goals in the Monroe County legislation. There of course needs to be more done, and that's why I stand here before the respected members today. Expanding our composting, our composting infrastructure is not just an environment opportunity or an environment responsibility. It is also a big economic opportunity that we can take advantage of. So with that, I ask you for two things. One, as my colleague mentioned here, the establishment of another private or public composting facility that can increase access for every resident and for large businesses that produce waste over two tons that can use these facilities. So this can be redirected from landfills and create more jobs for Monroe County. Second, beyond the sustainability engineer, there is a requirement of a big climate team that could unify the very diverse plans that Monroe County has taken. So there is a need for climate professionals that can integrate the climate action plan, the active transportation plan, and the comprehensive plan so they can be implemented cohesively and efficiently. Thank you very much for your time.
Our next three speakers are Kevin Lockhart, Chris Militello, and Jim Tiefen.
You know, I've heard it said a lot lately that people no longer trust politicians in this country. And for me, it's very easy to see why. Outside this building flies the Israeli flag, one that I suspect has probably been replaced several times over the last year or so. Honestly, what kind of message are you trying to send? I think it conveys a clear message about the values of the county executive, Adam Bellow, and many of the legislators in the room here today. That some of you hold no regard for what is right, and you value your own personal connections and careers over the lives of innocent people. This could also be seen as cowardice. People are tired of hearing about your deep ties and commitment to what has been deemed a genocidal nation by international law in nearly every other country around the world. Israel's genocide against Palestinians is plain to see for your constituents. They've now occupied land in Lebanon, occupied land in Syria, and in the last two years, our taxpayers have bankrolled over $30 billion, our United States taxpayers, towards them to achieve this, as well as to level the city of Gaza. Do you know how ironic it is that you have that flag flying outside next to the flag of the Native Americans who were killed and displaced from this place? It's a shame. Occupying Lebanon and Syria isn't about October 7th. Bombing civilians in the West Bank could never be framed as self-defense. It's colonialism. It's a result of a sick ideology, Zionism, which can now be seen as our foreign policy as the US President Trump suggests that we occupy Gaza and not allow any of the displaced Palestinians to return home. I'm sure some of you will play along with that and are waiting for your friends to develop their beachfront property there so you can visit. Genocide is not a political topic that can be avoided for your own personal gain and career without making you a disgustingly morally corrupt politician and human being. And the flag of genocide that hangs outside where your constituents can see it every day, shame on you. May you never know peace on those of you who will deny what's right. And I urge legislators with a conscience to speak up and demand the flag be removed. There's only a few of us today. We can pack these chambers.
I'm a city resident and a tennis player. I like to be on the court myself, and I like to watch those who really know how to play on television. Since the 2022 tennis season, the professional tournament organizers have been showing a blank rectangle and omitting the three-letter country code for players from Belarus and Russia, whose leaders are responsible for invading Ukraine. There's an Israeli flag outside this building. Take it down. I'm guessing that you have some Zionist voters, and I came tonight to show that you have at least one non-Zionist voter, namely me. I see there are others tonight from listening. I oppose the right-wing government in Israel and destruction of the property and people in Gaza. It's disproportionate and immoral. International tribunals are reviewing whether this is genocide. What's the Israeli flag got to do with county business? I wouldn't be taking your time tonight if the flag weren't out there. Legislators, take down that flag.
Good evening, and peace be upon you all. My name is Meltem Otontumur, and I was born and raised here in Rochester, New York. I would like to see the town that I was raised in, and the town that I love, and the town that I know that has incredible people of conscience residing in it, stand on the right side of history. Israel has been murdering innocent civilians in Palestine for 76 years, and since October 7th, has only intensified its ethnic cleansing and genocide of Palestinian people. The genocidal Israeli regime has murdered at least 50,000 civilians, men, women, and children, and day-old babies. The number of casualties is predicted to be more than 50,000, as not every murder is reported on. It's sickening to see the Israeli regime bomb and systematically starve civilians, but then claim to be the most moral army in the world, as they drop parachutes of aid and food into Gaza in a humiliating manner, only to kill civilians and their, as they're trying to gather food for their families. There's nothing moral about feeding and healing people that you starve and attempt to kill in the first place. All of these claims can be seen in videos online, and the evidence is right on our screens. The Israeli flag outside of this building is a symbol of genocide and apartheid. By keeping the flag up, it signals that you support the genocide and apartheid of Palestinian people. The International Criminal Court has issued an arrest warrant for Netanyahu. However, our government and our politicians simply ignore that. Our political leaders on a local and national level still continue to associate and work with an Israeli war criminal, as most of them are funded by AIPAC. But we're all asking for Rochester, New York to be different. Instead of keeping the Israeli flag up and signaling to our community that you stand with the oppressors, I ask that you consider taking the flag down and replacing it with the Palestinian flag, to signify that we, as a Rochester community, stand up on the right, stand on the right side of history and are in solidarity with the oppressed. The Rochester, New York that I grew up in would stand for liberation and justice and stand with the oppressed people of the world. Let's all be on the side of humanity. Thank you.
This concludes the public forum.
At this time, at this time, we'll recess the February 11, 2025 meeting of the Monroe County Legislature and convene Rochester Pure Waters District of the Pure Waters Administrative Board. Mr. Clerk, please note the attendance and read the first item on the agenda.
P-Web Agenda Item Number One, Referral Number 24-0433, authorizing an increase in improvement of facilities in Rochester Pure Waters District entitled RPWD General Collection System and Treatment Improvements Project.
Moved by legislator Hughes Smith, seconded by legislator Mufuji. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Item carries, next item.
P-Web Agenda Item Number Two, Referral 24-0435, authorizing an increase in improvement of facilities in Rochester Pure Waters District entitled RPWD-FEVSPDES Permit Upgrades Project.
Moved by legislator Hughes Smith, seconded by legislator Mufuji. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries, next item.
P-Web Agenda Item Number Three, Referral 24-0437, authorizing an increase in improvement of facilities in Rochester Pure Waters District entitled RPWD Sea Soap Tunnel System Improvements Project.
Moved by legislator Hughes Smith, seconded by legislator Mufuji. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries, next item.
P-Web Agenda Item Number Four, Referral 24-0439, authorizing an increase in improvement of facilities in Rochester Pure Waters District entitled Replacement Heavy Equipment.
Moved by legislator Hughes Smith, seconded by legislator Mufuji. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries, next item.
P-Web Agenda Item Number Five, Referral 24-0429, authorizing an increase in improvement of facilities in Gates-Chile-Agden Sewer District entitled GCOSD, General Collection System Improvements Project.
Moved by legislator Hughes Smith, seconded by legislator Mufuji. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries, next item.
P-Web Agenda Item Number Six, Referral 24-0431, authorizing an increase in improvement of facilities in Gates-Chile-Agden Sewer District entitled GCOSD-GCO Pump Station Improvement Project.
Moved by legislator Hughes Smith, seconded by legislator Mufuji. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries, next item.
P-Web Agenda Item Number Seven, Referral 24-0441, authorizing an increase in improvement of facilities in Aranacote Bay South Central Pure Waters District entitled Aranacote Bay South Central Pure Waters District General Pump Station and Interceptor Improvements Project.
Moved by legislator Hughes Smith, seconded by legislator Mufuji. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries, next item.
P-Web Agenda Item Number Eight, Referral 24-0443, authorizing an increase in improvement of facilities in Aranacote Bay South Central Pure Waters District entitled Aranacote Bay South Central Pure Waters District South Central Trunk Sewer Improvements Project.
Moved by legislator Hughes Smith, seconded by legislator Mufuji. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries, next item.
P-Web Agenda Item Number Nine, Referral 24-423, authorizing an increase in improvement of facilities in Northwest Quadrant Pure Waters District entitled Northwest Quadrant Pure Waters District General Pump Station, Interceptor, and Treatment Plant Improvements Project, and authorizing interfund transfer.
Moved by legislator Hughes Smith, seconded by legislator Mufuji. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries, next item.
P-Web Agenda Item Number Ten, Referral 24-0425, authorizing an increase in improvement of facilities in Northwest Quadrant Pure Waters District entitled Northwest Quadrant Pure Waters District Northwest Quadrant WRRF Electrical Improvements Project.
Moved by legislator Hughes Smith, seconded by legislator Mufuji. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Item carries, next item.
P-Web Agenda Item Number Eleven, Referral 24-0427, authorizing an increase in improvement of facilities in Northwest Quadrant Pure Waters District entitled Northwest Quadrant Pure Waters District WRRFSPDES Permit Upgrades Project.
Moved by legislator Hughes Smith, seconded by legislator Mufuji. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Item carries. We will now recess the Rochester Pure Waters District, Chilai, Gates-Chile-Agden Sewers District, Aranacote Bay South Central Pure Waters District, and the Northwest Quadrant Pure Waters District, and adjourn the Pure Waters Administrative Board. I will now reconvene the February 11, 2025 meeting of the Monroe County Legislature. We will now proceed with the consideration of the local laws. Will the clerk please read the first item on the agenda? Moved by legislator Yudelson, seconded by legislator Smith. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. We are now on to item 36.
Item Number 36, Referral 25-0009, authorizing contract with Cambridge Seven Associates Architects for professional design services for Seneca Park Zoo Tropical Exhibit and Main Entry Plaza Project.
Moved by legislator Bain, seconded by legislator Hughes Smith, Mufuji, Fani.
I got it.
I'm sorry? And Jackie? Okay, sorry.
Any other seconds on that?
Any other seconds?
This is 25-0009, item number 36.
So, any discussion? Yes, legislator Smith.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to make an amendment. The Seneca Park Zoo is an important community asset, and I appreciate the work that has gone into the planning of its future. I also do understand why the county made the difficult decision to move away from the original design as it became clear that the cost would be far too high. To be clear, it was the right choice to pivot to a more responsible plan for our taxpayers. However, given the substantial investment that has already gone into this specific project, it is critical that the legislature provide appropriate oversight moving forward to ensure that taxpayer dollars are spent wisely. That is why I'm proposing an amendment to cap the amendment authority of the contract with Cambridge Seven at $1 million and a requirement of a quarterly reporting on project progress and financials. This amendment does not seek to hinder the project, but rather to ensure transparency, accountability, while protecting hard-earned tax dollars of the taxpayers. A $1 million cap on contract amendments allows for necessary flexibility while ensuring that any significant cost increases receive proper legislative oversight and review. Likewise, the quarterly reporting will provide this body with regular updates so we can proactively monitor the project's progress and make informed decisions if there are any issues were to arise. Our responsibility as legislators is to protect taxpayers while ensuring that important projects like this one are successful. This amendment strikes a balance between fiscal responsibility and the need to move forward with this existing plan. For our zoo and our community, I hope all of my colleagues will support it. Thank you.
Thank you. So there's an amendment on the floor. Is there a second? Okay.
I got a second there with-
Sorry.
-legislator Milne. Legislator Milne. Legislator McIntyre. Legislator Colby. And legislator McCabe.
I'm sorry, I'm reading the amendment myself. Reading the amendment. Discussion on the amendment while I read the amendment. Any discussion on the amendment? Yes, legislator Barnhart. Which? Um, so legislator Baines? Okay.
Just for clarity. Underlined portion of the amendment states, provided that any amendment of one million dollar or more must be authorized by the county legislature. But, does that mean that there could be seven or eight amendments for nine hundred thousand dollars?
Uh, no, that would be for the total amount.
Madam President, with respect, especially because this is an amendment and we've just seen it, and thank you to my colleague for pointing it out because I didn't have my glasses on right away. I think we should, uh, I would suggest that we clarify that so that legislator Smith's intent is reflected in the language.
Okay, thank you. Madam President.
Yes.
May we have the Law Department define that for us?
Through the President, uh, we would be happy to offer, again, some language to clarify that intent. Uh, that, that, a series of amendments, right, that the total couldn't exceed a million dollars is what I'm hearing. If you give us thirty seconds, we could come up with some language.
Thank you. I appreciate that through the President.
You, legislator Baines, you still have the floor while they're doing it.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, it was my understanding from the eloquent remarks of legislator Smith that this was intended to cap the amendments at a million. And that would be, uh, the intent, as I understand it, if that is indeed the intent, I appreciate the county attorney offering language that even an English teacher like me will understand.
Going to wait for the response if that's okay? Legislator Barnhart, was your question going to be about that?
No, I was just going to give remarks whenever you're ready.
Yeah, thank you.
Madam President, if.
Yes.
Leave, I'll answer the question and then figure out the appropriate procedure. I think if the language said, provided that any amendment causing the total contract amount to exceed the original authorized amount by more than one million dollars must be authorized by the county legislature. I'm happy to write that out.
And then we needed a writing, right? You're going to go do it? Yep.
Madam President, um, I would move that while the amendment's being prepared, we take a five-minute courtesy recess so that certain people can access the facilities.
Recession granted. Five-minute recess. I'll now call the meeting back to order. I know I used the gavel. Don't want to. It should be. Hello? I now call the meeting back to order. Come back. He called a recess. Yes, legislator Smith.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I'd like to, um, make an amendment, my amendment, with the information.
Second on that.
Okay.
I get those seconds. I had legislator Bartholomew McCoy. Colby. Milne. Is there anybody else? McIntyre? And McCabe. Got it.
I would just like to note that Don Dorfer just came back. I know he's been excused in, out, in, out.
Sorry. Sorry, Jamaican Wi-Fi.
It's okay. Welcome back. Yes, exactly. Any, um, any comments on the amendment? Any comment, any, I'm sorry, any comments on the amendment? The amendment to the amendment, yes, correct. Yes. For the whole thing, yes. Any discussion on the amendment to the amendment? Questions seeing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Amendment to the amendment passes. Back to the main motion. Yep. Now we're back, we are back to the amendment. As amended, all, any discussion? Yes, legislator Barnhart.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to explain my vote on this amendment.
Yes.
The Seneca Park Zoo is an important community asset that is deserving of investments. This expansion has been many years in the making and does appear to now be on the right track. But a project of this magnitude, a total of one hundred and twenty-one million dollars, does need oversight from this body. Tonight, we are voting on a new design firm after paying the old design firm millions of dollars for a design we will not be using. The legislature was not aware that we lost six million dollars on the original design until we got this legislation for the new firm. We weren't aware because the contract for that old design firm was authorized by this body in 2015 when not one of us was in office. That resolution was for two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, but twelve amendments were added over the next eight years totaling eight million dollars. We didn't have to vote on those amendments because that 2015 resolution allowed for unlimited amendments as long as there were funds in the capital budget. Tonight's legislation had the same exact clause, given what has happened that is not responsible. This system essentially allowed big decisions to be made without our input or oversight. Maybe things would have gone a little differently had there been more public scrutiny. I had my own amendment prepared with a lower threshold to come back to us for approval, but this is a good compromise and I appreciate the reporting requirement. Thank you, legislator Smith, for introducing this amendment, and thank you to members of the administration for answering our questions about this resolution and the status of the project. And thank you to legislators for your discussion and consideration. I'm supportive of this amendment.
Thank you, legislator Barnhart. Legislator Basca Simmons.
Legislators, use that mic next to you there.
Oh.
I'd like to explain my vote. There is nothing more that I'd like to see than a world-class zoo in Monroe County. As a child, I looked forward to my long summer school breaks. My mother, an educator with the Rochester City School District, would rally up all the neighborhood kids and have them participate in community activities. Among the activities was a trip to Monroe County Seneca Park Zoo. We looked forward to exploring the new exhibits. However, after reviewing the data and learning close to six million dollars was spent on his design, he could partially use, and potentially another six million dollars without a shovel in the ground, isn't something that I could ever back. No number of amendments could get me to that point. In case you haven't noticed, we have a chronic homelessness crisis in Monroe County. Among those are three thousand three hundred and eighty-nine homeless children. Record number of foreclosures, particularly among our elderly population who own their properties right out and are now being pushed out due to an outstanding tax bill. I represent the poorest district in the city, in Monroe County, the northeast quadrant of the city, where nearly seventy percent of the families live below the poverty line. Food insecurities are a reality. Crime is a reality. I simply can't get behind this spend. I'll also remind folks that for months in this very chamber, our constituents asked us to fund up to a million dollars for an energy feasibility report. Yet that vote was, that vote was voted down by members of this body indicating that the feasibility report wasn't a good use of taxpayer dollars. I think we owe it to the taxpayers to be fiscally responsible. That's the oath that we took. I am going to ask that we table this vote until we can get a true commitment and firm numbers on the cost. Owe it to every taxpayer and to the children of Monroe County.
Thank you. Yes. I was going to ask to say.
Motion to table.
Okay, is there, you can't table, um, because we're currently doing, um, the amendment. You table on the main motion. Thank you. Uh, any other discussion?
On the amendment.
On the amendment, thank you.
As amended.
Uh, yes. Yes, legislator Cruz.
Vote.
On the amendment to the amendment.
Correct. Um, it was in, uh, 2015 originally when this legislation went through with a Republican majority, um, in administration. And I am happy to see today that our new friends across the aisle are understanding the need for an oversight, um, of spending of any executive administration. And, um, I would like to say that I have a full trust for our current administration, but it is also our job as legislators to have an oversee, oversight of, uh, taxpayers' funding and money. Um, and due to the last 10 years of this particular project, I think it would benefit the taxpayers and the people we represent to have the oversight that has been presented by the, uh, Republican Party, um, and that we all have now voted on so we can make sure that the expenditure is being, uh, spent, um, in a manner that best benefits the, uh, taxpayer. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we're voting on the amendment as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna do that. Any opposed? I think they were late.
Twenty-eight to one, motion to amend the amendment. Or, I'm sorry, motion, motion to amend as amended passes, twenty-eight to one.
One, okay, any...
The main motion.
Perfect, thank you. Any discussion on the main motion as amended? Yes, legislator Baines.
Pride is, uh, it goeth before the fall. If you've ever had a big plan in your life, I'm explaining my vote. If you've ever had a big plan and big dreams, you know that it's hard to give them up. And, uh, maybe it was a wedding you wanted to have, a real big wedding, or a big house you wanted to build. I wish that the government, uh, and the folk in this county had recalibrated and reconsidered the fast ferry. I wish we had reconsidered a number of projects that involve public money. So, yes, we spent some money on something that we, doesn't look like we're getting value for. But we're making a course correction that's going to actually save us money over the entirety of the project. And because I've seen the designs and was well briefed by administration and Mr. Garland, I'm also confident that this particular vendor, who is not local, but has an acute expertise in building facilities like this, I feel like, you know, you could say, "Well, I don't want to look like I wasted the money, so let's go forward," and then spend more money. That's where the expression "good money after bad" comes from. So I am looking forward to voting in favor of the main motion, and I applaud leadership for making the correction that was made. Thank you, I yield.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Yes, legislator DeFlorio.
Us the anticipated yearly operating cost of the redesigned aquarium.
Through you, Madam President, that information will be developed during design. We will do lifecycle costs as the design advances, um, but we can certainly report back on that, particularly when we come before your honorable body to award construction contracts.
Thank you. Through the President to the administration, um, just as a follow-up, previously, the previous design, um, I asked that question and was told that the estimated operating cost of the large aquarium was approximately a million dollars a year. So you don't have any kind of an estimated, approximated cost of what it's going to take to operate this aquarium at this time?
Uh, through you, Madam President, again, once we enter into more detailed design, we will develop that. Uh, the geothermal systems in the system, or in this design, uh, the tank is a little smaller, um, although there are two floors, so we're really doubling the experience for the zoo patron. Uh, so we're going to find energy efficiencies in the design, um, but we need to develop the details of the design itself before we can accurately estimate the energy costs and the staff costs and other operating costs associated with the new design.
Thank you. Are you, ask, any kind of ballpark figure? I mean, are, we're being asked to expend additional money on this project. It would be helpful to have a, at least somewhat of an understanding of what it's going to take to operate it on a yearly basis.
Through you, Madam President, you know, it's unusual to have this level of detail that we've designed already in this concept design. This is unusual, uh, and it's, it's been a very, very helpful step for us to understand what's involved with the design and that it's a feasible project to construct and to afford. But we, until we get into the very specific equipment, like the life support systems, the HVAC systems, the geothermal systems, we can't, we can't, even at this point, begin to give you a conceptual operating cost. But again, uh, I expect the design itself will be very efficient and will be reflected in the overall operating costs.
Thank you. Any other question, legislator?
Yes, just one additional follow-up question. What is the anticipated life expectancy of an aquarium of this type?
Through you, Madam President, 50 years.
Thank you.
Do you, any other discussion? The main motion as amended. Yes, legislator.
Um, through the chair, I am asking the same question that I just asked my staff. Tonight, we are simply voting on the cost of the design, but the actual project went through in 2023 and was voted on. So whether we vote yea or nay tonight, the project still moves forward for the zoo. Am I correct in that understanding?
Through you, Madam President, yes, the capital funding is in place, but the project would not move forward without an architect and engineering team under contract with Monroe County.
Um, no, through the chair I ask this because of my colleague wanting to table this. So my second question is, if this is tabled tonight, does, does it have an impact on the overall project? Because it, I seem to understand that whether we vote yes or no on this architect, there will be an architect that will do the project because this has already been voted on as a project for Monroe County in 2023. I believe I was in the room, in the audience, when it happened. Am I correct in that understanding?
Through you, Madam President, i- if the project, it was voted down or if it were tabled, we would not have a project going forward. It would be stalled at that point.
These are the designers.
Okay, I yield.
Thank you. Any other? Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay. Seeing none, all in favor? Second five, I think. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes, roll call vote, I thought it was going to be, let's go now.
Roll call vote on the motion as amended by the amendment. Mr. Edelson. Mr. Edelson votes yes. Mr. Brew?
Yes.
Mr. Brew votes yes. Ms. Barnhart. Ms. Barnhart votes yes. Ms. Bartholomew McCoy. Ms. Bartholomew McCoy votes yes. Mr. Baines. Mr. Baines votes yes. Mr. Blankley. Mr. Blankley votes yes. Ms. Bonak. Ms. Bonak votes yes. Mr. Burgess. Mr. Burgess votes yes. Mr. Chardy. Mr. Chardy votes yes. Mr. Colby. Mr. Colby votes yes. Mr. Cruz. Mr. Cruz votes yes. Ms. Delvecchio Hoffman. Ms. Delvecchio Hoffman votes yes. Mrs. DeFlorio. Mrs. DeFlorio votes no. Mr. Dondorfer. Mr. Dondorfer, are you there?
Yep.
Is that a yes? Yes? Mr. Dondorfer votes yes. Mr. Frazier. Mr. Frazier votes yes. Ms. Hasman. Ms. Hasman votes yes. Ms. Hugh Smith. Ms. Hugh Smith votes yes. Mr. Johns. Mr. Johns votes yes. Mr. Keller. Mr. Keller votes no. Mr. Long. Mr. Long votes yes. Mr. Mafucci. Mr. Mafucci votes yes. Mr. McCabe. Mr. McCabe votes yes. Ms. McIntyre. Ms. McIntyre votes no. Mr. Milne. Mr. Milne votes yes. Mr. Morris. Mr. Morris votes yes. Mr. Sinclair. Mr. Sinclair votes yes. Ms. Smith. Ms. Smith votes yes. Ms. Vasquez Simmons. Ms. Vasquez Simmons votes no. And President Roman.
Yes.
President Roman votes yes. Twenty-five to four. Resolution as amended by the amendment passes.
Ew. Wow.
Item number forty?
Yes.
Referral twenty-five dash zero zero one three. Authorizing contract with Center for Governmental Research for Professional Services for Monroe County Small Business Roundtable Assessment and Reappropriating Fund Balance.
Sorry, moved by legislator...
Frazier.
Frazier, seconded by legislator Bartholomew McCoy. And Mafucci. Um, any discussion? Yes, legislator.
In my vote, when we approved the Climate Action Plan Phase Two, we were told there was going to be no expense of taxpayer dollars. Yet here we are, not even a year later, and we're going to spend taxpayer dollars on the Climate Action Plan for this Monroe County Small Business Roundtable Assessment. So we are going to spend taxpayer dollars to do an assessment that we weren't going to spend taxpayer dollars on. So I'm a no vote on this, and I urge my colleagues to support me in this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Legislator, uh, DeFlorio first, I guess, and then go back then.
Thank you. Through the President to the administration, um, I just want to clarify, this expenditure is specifically to hire a non-for-profit, um, organization to do a feasibility assessment to determine if the county should embark on commissioning a roundtable discussion. Is that correct?
Through the chair, uh, this SBR assessment is to hire a consultant to guide us through the process of determining if an SBR Sustainable Business Roundtable would be, uh, appropriate in Monroe County based on business appetite. It is, um, excuse me, just getting over a cold. Uh, it is designed to walk us through the process, understand the variables that we need to look at, walk us through who would be interested, and then help us to make a decision as whether that entity would be successful in Monroe County.
Thank you. So what would the cost of implementing this small business roundtable discussion group be?
Through the chair, that is undetermined at this point. It may be answered through the study, but it is not the intention of the Sustainable Business Roundtable Assessment to implement this, uh, group. It is just to determine if it would be viable in Monroe County and would help businesses reduce profits, enhance their sustainability, and be able to make goals that would further the Climate Action Plan.
I, I...
Through the chair, please excuse me, I misspoke. Uh, I am on cold medicine as well. Uh, of course, it would be to increase profits for businesses.
Make sure everyone's paying attention, right?
Thank you, and I, I appreciate that, but I, I guess I'm just wondering what the need for this is and if, why we can't do a pilot or some kind of test or just implement this and see if it works. Um, $70,000 is a lot of money to ask the taxpayers of this community to invest, to do a feasibility study, to see if we should do a small table, roundtable discussion. What type of benchmarks have you put into this? What is the, um, output of this project, I guess, this assessment?
Through the chair, the Sustainable Business Roundtable Assessment will further the goals of the Climate Action Plan. The reason it is being studied for Monroe County is that businesses make up the majority of climate-emitting gases in Monroe County, and they will have the most impact if they can determine what would be the most advantageous for themselves to move forward and to find reductions in their emissions, but also find ways to reduce their, uh, waste, which that could be potentially turned into actually assets. There are businesses that find waste, turn it into a profit sector, and we hope to have more businesses do exactly that. The assessment is designed to walk us through and identify who those businesses are, what this will do, what they will be able to do, and how to do that in a short timeframe. We do not have the in-house capacity to go through this assessment, and CGR, with its partners, has specialized knowledge that we do not have in-house in the planning department.
Thank you. I yield the floor.
Legislator Chardy?
Through the President to the administration, since 2016, $87 million in grants have been awarded to Climate Smart Communities. In, uh, December of 2024, the D E C announced another $16 million in Climate Smart Community Grant Awards. The town of Gates received $157,500 for an adaptation plan. The town of Penfield received $60,000 for four Climate Smart Community actions. My question is, did anybody from the county apply for these grants specifically, the $16 million that this was recently awarded in December of 2024? And second, wouldn't, uh, it be better a source to have that funding come from New York State rather from this community?
Through the chair, uh, the Sustainable Business Roundtable Assessment is an outgrowth of the county's Climate Action Plan, which was a multi-year process. We did, uh, look at the ability to fund this study and other climate-related actions through grant funding. This specific assessment is now eligible for grant funding that we were able to, uh, find. However, uh, this work will help us potentially secure future grants as it is a action item in the New York State Climate Smart Communities Program, which will get us a higher rating in that structure, which would then make us eligible for additional or potentially higher grant funding.
Through the President to the administration, do you know whether or not this would have qualified specifically for the 2024, December 23rd, 2024, $16 million grant that was provided by the Department of, uh, by the D E C?
Through the chair, I will have to get back to you on that.
Uh, I'd like to explain my vote. Uh, when I voted for the Climate Action Plan, part of the reason I voted for that plan specifically was the fact that I was very much aware that the depart, that the D E C and the, uh, government of the state of New York was going to apply specifically a specific amount of money, and a $87 million, to be specific, uh, for these types of grants. Prior to coming before this legislative body and seeking money for programs with the Climate Action Plan, I think it is incumbent on this administration to first seek it from New York State. Apply for these grants. And if you don't get the grants, then come to this body and seek it from this body. So to come here and seek $75,000 from us and tell me that you never applied for $16 million in grants when Gates gets $157,000 and Penfield's gets $60,000, I don't believe is, is, um... and Penfield's gets sixty thousand dollars, I don't believe is, is, I don't believe it should have happened. I think the grant should be asked for by New York State first, then come to us. For that reason, I would vote no.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Legislator Hugh Smith?
Legislator Brew?
Oh, I'm sorry, legislator Brew. I will call you next. Go ahead. Legislator Hugh Smith has the floor.
Yep.
I apologize.
I applaud the administration for moving forward, exploring whether a Sustainable Business Roundtable is right for Monroe County. I believe that it is. Erie County has had a successful model running for several years, many years. It's a public-private partnership that is benefits not just the staff of the businesses, but the environment and the profitability of local businesses. They have over seventy members, businesses involved, and they have the University of Buffalo as an anchor institution. I hope we have, discover a similar model here that has proven to be very effective. I know in conversations with businesses such as a manufacturing association, there is indeed a keen interest in having the ability to collaborate across sectors and with experts in the field to deal with many mandates that are coming down from the state of New York and the federal government that will help them be successful and to be profitable. I don't know about you, my colleagues, but I would like our businesses to be successful here in Monroe County, and for that reason, I will be voting yes. Thank you.
Legislator Brew?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Through you to the Administration, I apologize if this question's already been asked, but I would like the administration to provide us with the reasons why they feel that the, this particular referral, the contents of this referral were not eligible for state grant money. Through the President to the Administration, I'm not asking that this be provided now, but to be provided at some point in the near future.
They are talking amongst themselves. I'll let you know what, or they will answer, or they won't.
Through the chair, we will provide you with that after. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I'm sorry, did I say another hand? No. Legislator McIntyre?
Regarding a specific point within the Climate Smart Communities Program, which point would that be?
It falls under one of the pledge elements that supports collaboration with businesses for green business practices. I forget the specific pledge element under the Climate Smart Communities Program, but we can get that information to you.
And through the chair, I, I love CGR. I actually am one of the few that knows CGR pretty well. I've looked at their reports. But I'm very confused as to why this cannot be handled in-house, why we can't just simply start a roundtable program with our local businesses. I think that a lot of the Climate Action Program and the Climate Smart Communities Program, they function the best when they are community-led rather than bureaucratically-led. So I'm curious as to why this cannot be handled without doing the CGR report, especially because I think that we just set aside money to have a Climate Action Plan organizer. Am I incorrect?
Through the chair, this effort is intended to be business-led and business-driven, and so we are gauging with an outside party to engage with those businesses and conduct extensive outreach with them to understand their needs, their desires of such a body, and what would be beneficial to them moving forward. We do not have the capacity in-house to do that exact project.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Okay, well, before I yield the floor, then I guess I'm going to explain my vote.
Okay.
I'm very familiar with these, with these plans because I was in charge of, I'm in charge of the Gates Program, and I love it. But my fervent opinion on this is that these programs are best when they are led by members of the community and not by members of the government. Therefore, I will most certainly be voting no on this.
Thank you. Thank you, legislator DeFlorio.
Thank you. One additional question through the President to the Administration, did we reach out to Genesee Finger Lakes Regional Planning Council and their Smart Community, I don't know what their title is, advisor, to see if that, this is something that they could handle within GCFL?
Through the chair, they, we, excuse me, we advertised and published an RFP that they were open and available to apply to. They did not. We did have conversations with them about this project as they are housed within our office, but they did not seem to, they did not respond to the RFP.
Thank you. I, I join my colleague legislator McIntyre. I just, I don't understand why we need to hire an outside entity to do an assessment. Apparently, there's a working model in Erie County that it seems like we could utilize their ideas. There's a lot of information out and available, seventy thousand dollars, seventy, I'm sorry, seventy-five thousand dollars is an extensive amount of money to hire an outside consultant to do a, an assessment of whether or not we should implement an idea. I, I will be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay. Oh, yes, legislator color.
I think briefly to explain my vote, you know, while I'm not familiar with, with what this exact assessment would be, just for comparison, you know, this would be something like four hundred hours of an absolute crackerjack engineer. And I am familiar, quite familiar, with engineering and business consulting side of things. And so, you know, when I look at this, I would say forming a roundtable could be done without this study, and that four hundred hours of a sustainability engineer supporting that roundtable could provide more benefit, just a more appropriate use of these funds. I will be voting no, primarily just because I think there's a better way that that money could be spent to support the business community, and there needs to be successfull within the realm of environmental mandates. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Roll call vote. Mr. Edelson. Mr. Edelson votes yes. Mr. Brew?
No.
Mr. Brew votes no. Ms. Barnhart. Ms. Barnhart votes yes. Ms. Bartholomew McCoy. Ms. Bartholomew McCoy votes yes. Mr. Baines. Mr. Baines votes yes. Mr. Blankley. Mr. Blankley votes yes. Ms. Bonnick. Ms. Bonnick votes yes. Mr. Burgess. Mr. Burgess votes yes. Mr. Charlie. Mr. Charlie votes no. Mr. Colby. Mr. Colby votes no. Mr. Cruz. Mr. Cruz votes yes. Ms. Delvaki Hoffman. Ms. Delvaki Hoffman votes yes. Mrs. DeFlorio. Mrs. DeFlorio votes no. Mr. Dondorfer.
Bond?
Mr. Frazier. Mr. Frazier votes yes. Ms. Hasman. Ms. Hasman votes yes. Ms. Hugh Smith. Ms. Hugh Smith votes yes. Mr. Johns. Mr. Johns votes yes. Mr. Keller. Mr. Keller votes no. Mr. Long. Mr. Long votes yes. Mr. Mafucci. Mr. Mafucci votes yes. Mr. McCabe. Mr. McCabe votes no. Ms. McIntyre. Ms. McIntyre votes no. Mr. Milne. Mr. Milne votes yes. Mr. Morris. Mr. Morris votes no. Mr. Sinclair. Mr. Sinclair votes no. Ms. Smith. Smith votes no. Ms. Vasquez Simmons. Ms. Vasquez Simmons votes yes. President Roman.
Yes.
President Roman votes yes. Eighteen to ten. Resolution passes. Item number fifty-one, referral twenty-five dash zero-zero-two-five, confirming appointments to Monroe County Soil and Water Conservation Board.
Moved by legislator Barnhart, seconded by legislator Baines. Is there any discussion? Being none, oh, so sorry. My apologies.
I'll declare my interest. One of the individuals is my brother.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Legislator Baines? Absolutely.
A lot of time, and this is a very-
I agree. Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Just legislator Vasquez Simmons was the name?
Simmons. Um, item carries?
Twenty-seven to one.
Yep, twenty-seven to one. Thank you very much. There being no unfinished business. Legislator Edelson? Don't move. You need adjourned.